So we've got a bunch of other listeners on board, but the entire board is here. Nicole Askew, David Vigimori, Joe Stargiati, Paul Alvarez and me. So first item on our agenda was parking meters holiday season 2020.
Yes, so.
That issue was the idea of not charging for the meters.
That's right, as we do every year, we have a resolution on tonight's board meeting to affirm that, but just wanted to ensure this board was supportive of doing that once again. We would start bagging, we'd have the meters bagged Friday and they'd stay in place through December 26.
So I certainly think we should, anything we can do to help. I'm not sure how much it does help, but certainly I think we can do to help. I will say, and will make the point tonight, to the extent that anyone's listening, I will say I've had bird's eye view of this out my day job office window. And the day we bag the meters, the supply of parking drops like a rock, because lots of folks who would have parked elsewhere parked downtown. And so we need to obviously make the point to people as we always do that time limits still apply.
That's right.
Right, and this is only for the one, two and three hour meters, not the 12 hour meters.
Right, which is the way it's been out for a year, right?
Yes.
Anybody on the board have any opinion on that subject?
I'd just like to say on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce that we always want to give our thanks to the village for doing this. It does help all the businesses. A lot of our clients that are just trying to run in and grab something from the stores. I think it definitely, it's a nice gesture and I think it also kind of sets off the festive holiday when you see those bags on there. I think it gets everyone a little more excited that we're almost there. So on behalf of the businesses, thank you to the village.
Well, thank you, Paul. And I mean, I agree, at least it creates a little spirit of charity, so.
Thank you.
All right, next item was outside dining village roadways. We've had some back and forth about that. Originally, we were going to remove the concrete barriers for the winter season on the theory that, you know, into December and beyond, they wouldn't be useful anyway. But at least two of the three places that have them at the moment think they will be useful and have customers who say they will choose to sit outside if they can, even in very cold weather. So I want to add to that, Eric.
Yeah, sure. So we, right now, we've got the barriers outside of Vella, Dolphin South and Stoll. They've approached us for extending the barrier placement, which we had originally planned to move this week. They've actually, they're reporting back that customers are pretty hearty, willing to have a meal outside in 50, 40 degree weather. So we talked to Jeff Beconum, Superintendent of Public Works, and we're all in agreement to extend the barrier placement. If we have an overly bad winter, we'll look to remove them. But here's hoping to some mild weather and having people eat outside.
Plus, with bags on the meters for at least one month, for the month of December and even into, you know, January. So now we're collecting the meters again, but still, there's just not that much traffic. I mean, at lunchtime, it gets busy, maybe dinnertime, you know, it gets a little bit busy. But mostly there are places to park everywhere now, so, you know, it's worth doing.
Yeah, we should certainly do it.
They have the agreement of their neighbors?
Yes, and we have existing permits, sidewalk cafe permits that are actually good for about a year. So going to extend that, but.
Does the other question I had along these lines, this is, this permit is for parking, is for outdoor dining as correct? I just want to make sure we don't end up with fully enclosed tents outside.
Right, if they want a tent, they have to go to the building department. That's an additional permit.
Right. And if it snows, can we have them shovel inside the area and make sure it gets shoveled? I mean, they wanted, they want these barriers there now, make sure they shovel it. Don't just say, well, there's nobody eating now, so shovel it, get rid of the snow, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, one of the concerns was where will they put the snow? Because they haven't got a place to put it. So that, honestly, I think it's going to have to be sort of a work in progress. And if we get lucky, we don't have too severe a winter and it's not too big a deal. Certainly if we had, you know, a two foot snowfall, it may get complicated, but certainly the right thing to do for the moment, so.
Right.
Okay, all right. So the next is a discussion of out of, of non-resident water district customers. I misspoke, district is a loaded word in this context. This is a discussion that has gone on in various forms for a very long time, many decades. Let me share my screen here. I'll just sort of set the stage and then Eric can chime in. Have I achieved that? You see that map?
Yep.
Okay, so zoom out here. This is the town of Mount Pleasant Water District map. Here is the village of Pleasantville. These colored areas are areas that are water districts. And each of them, water district has specific meaning. And to create a water district requires the approval of the New York City DEP, which is the supplier of the raw water. And it has various implications, but the bottom line is, can't speak for Mount Pleasant, but each of these districts functions as kind of a business unit. And there is a separate report for the water quality. In some cases, the source of the water varies from each of these districts. But in the village of Pleasantville, this being the border of the actual village of Pleasantville, we operate as a single district. And so the expense of operating the village water system and the expense of maintaining it and upgrading it over time is borne by all village residents. As partly an accident of history and geography, we also supply water to 400, what is it, 470-ish?
Seventy-seven.
Residents or properties that are not in the village of Pleasantville. So in a couple of small cases, the area we supply water to is itself a district. We have a master meter at the village boundary, keeping track of how much water goes, goes through that master meter into the town of Mount Pleasant. We bill Mount Pleasant for that bulk water. And Mount Pleasant operates an account with those residents of Mount Pleasant, just as they would anywhere else. The only difference is that we are supplying the raw water. So I think it's fair to say that over a long period of time, 30 or 40 years, it has been the position of the village that that's the best way to manage that. That is, we're happy to continue to supply water in the, to these properties. And in many cases, we are the only reasonable place to get it. But it is problematic for us to be supplying water into another town through pipes that are under another town's streets and to customers who don't live here and are not taxpayers here. So as you know, when we annually adopt the water rates, there is a rate for village residents. There is a higher rate for districted out of village residents. And that reflects the fact that they don't live in the village, they don't pay village taxes, but they're in a district and we simply bill the bulk rate through the meter and are not responsible for the billing to individual homeowners, a collection of fees and all of that. Then there's a higher rate yet, and that is for the residents who are outside the village, in the town of Mount Pleasant, but not in a district. And in that circumstance, 400 and some people, we are sending a water bill just as we would to a resident. But the rates are higher for the reasons just described. We've had a lot of commentary about this recently because we had a couple of very significant water main breaks in, in the, in the Lake Street, Bear Ridge, Munson, that whole zone. And when we have a water main break outside the village, not inside the village of Pleasantville, our village team responds and locates the closest valves on either side of the break to shut it off and stop losing water, which incidentally is a loss to the village, not to, not to anyone else. We have to pay for that water. And then we hire an outside contractor to come and do the work. A bill is generated and then the cost for that is, is applied to the homes that were affected by that repair. So that has gone on in various ways for a very long time. But recently, a couple of serious breaks happened and some folks in, in a couple of neighborhoods got bills of upwards of $1,000 or maybe even more. And obviously that caused a lot of concern. It also raised the issue in some neighborhoods that hadn't given a lot of thought to it over the years because there hadn't been much trouble. I can say that historically, the focus of this has been in the Locust Woodland area, again, out of the village of Pleasantville, but supplied by us because not only have there been breaks, but also there are various kinds of water pressure problems and fire protection issues. And some neighbors have wells and therefore aren't concerned about it. Others have water problems and would like to see an upgrade. All of these things are likely to cost millions of dollars. But the backdrop of all of this is that the village of Pleasantville, at its expense, invested millions and millions of dollars back in the 90s to buy a share of the Millwood Water Treatment Plant to meet the Clean Drinking Water Act standards of the 90s. I can say that our neighboring communities, Briar Cliff and Mount Pleasant declined to participate in that at the time. And our residents ended up with much higher water rates, but high quality filtered water. We've also spent 30 years in a phased program of relining water mains and trying to make improvements wherever we could and making improvements in our water tanks, all of which benefit, obviously, the village. But we are not in a position to make those investments outside the village boundary. So we've been in discussion with the town of Mount Pleasant that was, been going on for a while and have the proposal for an intermissible agreement that would say, okay, if, if we identify a break, our team will respond as they always do and identify the valves to shut off the problem. And then we'll call the town of Mount Pleasant and they can use their internal force to come and make the repairs instead of hiring an outside contractor, which in theory would be less expensive and those folks would get, be less affected. It doesn't solve the problem, which honestly is not ours to solve, of how the costs of the eventual repair and eventual upgrades in some of those zones are borne across a wider group of people. So have I got that mostly right, Eric? Did I?
Yeah, I think one point of clarification is that these out of, out of village districted areas, when there's a break, the town responds to it. So the billing flows directly to the town as does, you know, repair, maintenance and emergency response.
Only in the districted areas, right?
Right, only in the, you know, the town districted areas.
Right.
The non-districted areas, so the town non-districted areas, emergency repairs are borne by a smaller, you know, if you're on a main that gets damaged to it, that bill is spread across a limited group of homeowners. And that's why the bills have the capacity to be, you know, pretty high in some circumstances. So, you know, we've, we've now gone through the files, done a lot of research. This is an issue that dates back to the 60s, 70s, 80s and is now just only getting worse, obviously, you know, as, as the years go by. So the point of bringing this up was to educate, you know, the newer board members who may not know that this is a circumstance that exists, but something that we are communicating with the town about.
So did any board members have questions? I think perhaps some of the folks who are on the Zoom call with us now. I know John Fisher represents the folks up on Munson. Are there questions from the board before I invite anybody else to offer a comment here in this work session?
Has there ever been an attempt, Peter, to obtain any kind of insurance on the system there?
I doubt that there is any such thing available. I've never heard of anybody writing such insurance. I will say, I mean, in the recent breaks we had that affected the Munson area, for example, the pipes are, were found to be old and, and the diameter significantly reduced by deposits. You know, definitely a circumstance of, of the need for a big capital improvement. So I don't think you could get insurance for it. It might be that you could get insurance on a new system. I don't know, are you aware of any such thing, Eric or Noreen?
We don't even have it on our own.
Right.
It's something that once again is not traditionally covered under municipal insurance coverage.
Yeah, and I somewhat doubt anyone writes that insurance, but I mean, it's a question we could certainly ask. So any other board members have a question? And then, all right. If there are folks on the call who had a comment or a question, I invite you to unmute yourself and let us know. If you have a comment or question, please let us know your name and address. John, I see your hand raised. Unmute yourself there. You're muted. Let's see if I can, I can unmute you, all right?
Oh, now he muted.
Hold on. There you go.
Now?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, so for the board members, I am the president of the Munson Pond Association. And we had two incidents within about 10 days of one another. One in our immediate small neighborhood and then one up on Bear Ridge. And then a third one on Bear Ridge, about 500 yards to the west. We got immediately bills, I got immediately phone calls from everybody saying, what's going on? And so I've joined the party. And all I will say, we're still in a learning process, which is why I want to sit in on this. But I have found my discussions with the town encouraging. I know that, Peter, there's an intermunicipal agreement draft under consideration by the town and the village that would make some basic changes in the relationship between the village and the town. I'm looking at it, my neighbors are looking at it, as we were 13 people hit it, hit with a large bill. Take a large number divided by 13, you get a large number. The second instance, we had 65 people sharing the cost. And the one we weren't, in the end, part of, had 100 people in it. So what is obvious to me is that if we could find some way to consolidate these 477 non-res residents and spread costs through some kind of maybe surcharge evenly across all 477, you'd wind up with a much more modest number. And so this is way beyond where I am at the moment, but I, but these are ideas that are starting to percolate. And I want to be a friend of both the village and the town.
We think of you that way.
Our presence can facilitate any of this.
Well, thank you for that, John. And the board members all have a copy of your letter in our, in our backup and it's also available to the public on our agenda. If you go to Pleasantville-NY.gov. So the, the, the draft intermissible agreement that you had is the original one that we had a conversation with Mount Pleasant about and is, is due to be updated. It has not come back to us yet from their council.
Uh huh.
But, you know, the core piece of it, I think, is the accurate goal. And that would be that instead of us calling a private contractor, the town of Mount Pleasant would arrive and use their resources to fix the pipe. So how they bill that and at what cost would be up to them. And you would have to ask them how they envision doing it. I do think that they have probably got the legal obligation, just as we do, to apportion it across the group that is perceived to benefit from it. That is the beauty of districting, because you establish a whole group of people. You know, this map that is on the screen now. When, and again, I may be out of my league here, but my belief is, if something happens in the Old Farm Hill Water District, this orange district on somebody's street, the cost for that repair is borne by the entire district. Do you think I'm right about that, Eric and Noreen?
That's correct, that's right.
So, so what that means is, you know, just like insurance, someone has damage to their house by hurricane and everybody who had insurance pays for it. In this case, the cost of these repairs is borne by a bigger group and the impact on any individual is smaller. I will also say, I believe, and again, it's not mine to say, but I think this is the case, that when the town of Mount Pleasant identifies the need to dig up the roads and replace water mains, that is, you know, a multimillion dollar venture, depending on the scale of it. Typically, money is borrowed through a long-term bond and the debt service to pay back that bond over 20 or 30 years is again borne by the folks in that district. So I believe that the way it works is that if something happens in this orange district, either a repair or an upgrade, the cost of that is borne by the people in the orange district and, and not by people in the yellow or the green or the whatever. The problem that you folks have, the 470 some odd people who are served by us but are in the town of Mount Pleasant, is that you're not in a district. And therefore, when something happens, if it's on an individual street, it's everybody on that street who ends up paying for it instead of a broader group. So as you suggest, the idea of a new district would be great. I think Mount Pleasant has some concerns about how they could do that. There is the question, and again, it's not ours to determine, whether a district could just be expanded to encompass adjacent areas. Again, all of this has a component, I'll stop my share, a component that involves the New York City Department of Environmental Protection because they supply the raw water. And then, you know, there are a whole bunch of other factors, including where the water comes from, which in our case, for the village of Pleasantville and everybody we serve, is coming through the Millwood Filtration Plant that we jointly own a piece of with the town of Newcastle. In the town of Mount Pleasant, the water is coming from several different sources, depending on where you live. So it's a little bit of a rat's nest of a problem that evolved over many decades. And, and it, it no doubt all began in simpler times, but times ain't so simple anymore. Yes, John?
Quick comment, Peter, because I think you need to move on with your agenda. It's clear to me that 85% of the problem, if it is to be solved, is going to be solved with the help of the town and with your cooperation. But that's going to be an easy part, I think, for the village. So we're, I'm interested in seeing, I thought the IMA that I had was a revised IMA, but I guess it's not, but that's helpful for me to know because I need to see what you're looking at.
Well, we're not looking at anything either. We haven't gotten the revised IMA back yet.
So we all need to look at that. But I think we're going to concentrate our attention for the next couple of weeks on our contacts over in the town with the town supervisor and with David Smith, who's their water chief, chief engineer for the town. And to keep you guys informed on how that goes and ask for help or a voice when we need it.
Okay, so Anjali asked in the chat, is there a timeline for the revised IMA? We're waiting for it from them. We had this conversation some weeks back. It's coming from their council. I would expect it any day now. Have you heard, Eric or Noreen?
I touched base with the supervisor last week and he was following up with council. So expecting it ASAP.
Okay, I mean, it wasn't a radical change, but recognize if you've read what was in there. It proposed, and this was their language, that the repairs be handled in the way I just described, different from what happens now. But also that we add a $25 a quarter surcharge, in essence, $100 a year to the bills for those 477 properties and then remit that $100 to Mount Pleasant.
Right.
And then, I mean, that, that would produce a stream of revenue and I don't know how they would propose to use that, whether that money would be to make the repairs or whether that money would be towards upgrades. I mean, what's clear at this point is at least in some of these areas, and it's certainly the case in Locust Woodland, there are substandard pipes that are within shouting distance of needing wholesale replacement.
Yeah. And that's something that we would have to be taking into account with whatever financial arrangements are made so that there's a forward look in this and not get caught by surprise 10, a year and a half from now.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, 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 it's big money, but big money across a lot of people in a, in a long-term bond is manageable.
Right, right.
All right, as I mentioned at the outset, Pleasantville spent millions of dollars to buy into the Millwood plant. And, and we continue to benefit from it. But, you know, we have high quality filtered water, which all of those residents and non-residents benefit from, which is a good thing, but a lot of investment has been made. And, and, you know, collectively been borne over a long period of time by Pleasantville residents.
Right, right. Well, I really appreciate your inviting us to join in this session. And I know you've got a big agenda and so my natural instinct is to retain your friendship by choosing my team from your session.
All right, was there anyone else who wanted to comment on the non-resident water question?
Brian D. has his hand raised.
Hey, Brian. Can't quite hear you, can you talk a little closer to the mic? Not really, we can vaguely hear you.
I can't hear you at all, Brian.
How about that, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
So I just want to thank you all for your time and giving us a voice here as well. I mean, obviously, we pay a out-of-resident rate for the water, plus a non-resident fee. Plus, it sounds like we're adding an additional proposed fee on top of that. And I think all of us in these areas understand the need for having to supply some money to this. I mean, government runs by the, by the taxpayers investing money and then the government taking the money for, to fix these issues. I just, it's a little concerning to hear these multiple layers of costs. So I'm wondering if that can be taken into account for either the non-resident fee or the actual rate of the water. I don't know if that's part of the discussion. And then the only other part that I find just a little, I get worried about personally, is if this is a problem that has gone on for decades. I know you've invested heavily in the actual water itself, but then there's a concern about the state of what the pipes that are delivering the water to our families are. And while a little bit of the shared wealth might help us get to a better way to start maintaining the problems with these pipes, I think there also should be an eye on the long-term, the long-term health of the water system within this area as well. Because again, I can only, and I'm not a water expert, I'm only a teacher, but I would have to imagine that a piping system that hasn't had any attention in decades may not be delivering the quality of water that, from where it's being sourced at.
So thank you for that. I mean, let me say, first off, I totally sympathize with the situation you're all in. I mean, you live in a house for a long time or you buy a house, you turn on the water, it comes out. For the most part, that's what you needed to know. I don't blame anybody for being in this circumstance. Comes as a rude surprise to find out that there are these, you know, boxes within boxes that are between you and how it all works. So what I would say about that is that our consistent position is that we cannot bond money for capital improvements in somebody else's town. I say somebody else's town, we're officially, you know, we're an incorporated village within the town of Mount Pleasant. It's not that we're not part of Mount Pleasant, but outside the village boundaries. um, the outside the village boundaries, we, our position is, we can't, we can't bond money and make those improvements. Further, it would involve, you know, digging up Mount Pleasant's roads to do it, so. And as you perhaps have seen in other jurisdictions, including ours, you know, when that work is done, there's a network of temporary pipes laid on the surface uh to to supply water to the houses. It's it's a big deal. So Mount Pleasant, I know, is uh, they have quite a few million dollars of water improvements on the boards right now in some places. Um, and I mean, I think it's a question uh to to raise to them. And we're not in a position to solve the infrastructure problem in your in in areas out, in your neighborhoods outside the village. I will say, if it's any, any reassurance, and again, I can't speak for Mount Pleasant, but in the village of Pleasantville, uh, there is water testing done on a regular basis, including random water testing uh at addresses given to us at random by the county health department. So there is an effort, an ongoing constant through the year effort, not only to be assessing the quality of the water that comes out of our filtration plant, which is very good, but also the quality of the water when it ends up in somebody's house, so. So there's, there's that piece of it, but that isn't to say that what goes on in a given neighborhood or a cul-de-sac or the hydrodynamics of some weird piping situation isn't creating stale water that stays in the pipe too long, you know, whatever it might be, so. It's a, it's a I I tell you, the the more you know about it, and I've been at this a lot of years now, uh, it's quite an amazing crazy quilt system that uh delivers water and takes sewage away from everybody's house, uh, which is in in one respect, a testament to human ingenuity, and another respect is like, holy cow, this works, right? So.
I, yeah, I appreciate it. I'm sure, like I said, nothing is going to be solved today, but just, I'm just wondering, I'm hoping that that can be part of the dialogue. Again, we would love to have it on our end with the 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 town of Mount Pleasant as well, but as you're engaged with them, um, you know, I don't know when your next conversation with uh the village will be, but to to kind of bring up those points as well, we very much appreciate it.
Well, I thank you for that. I thank you, John's letter and my conversation with him. You know, I think it's it's helpful to have this engagement, because, you know, honestly, for most people, especially in a neighborhood that hasn't had this problem lately, it comes as a root supply surprise, so, you know, now we can get more people involved and try to at least, at least make sure that each step that's taken is a step in the right direction. So as I said at the outset, our dream solution, which I don't think is realistic, at least not immediately, would be to have a a meter at the edge of the village and whatever water we send to the town of Mount Pleasant, we'd build to the town of Mount Pleasant.
Yeah.
But, you know, neither are we going to abandon any of you. I mean, we're going to keep sending your water. Yes, John?
I'd like to make one parting request, which I think you and Eric could help us with. I would like, we've started to reach out to 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 families that were in the second incident, the sixty-five families.
Yeah.
That are outside our immediate neighborhood, but these four hundred and seventy-seven people all have a common interest, and I would guess that eighty percent of them have no idea any of these conversations are going on. And my impulse is to get a piece of information out to them and indicate there are a group of us gathering to enter the dialogue with the town and with you. And I wonder if you could provide us, or your billing department could provide us with a list of the mem- those four hundred and seventy-seven non-resident area residents.
So without knowing for sure, I'm guessing that our legal privacy requirements would mean that we can't give you that list.
Uh-huh.
Uh, but by the same token, we all have a common interest in solving this problem and given the concerns lately, it might be that the answer is for us to reach out to those folks and let them know what's going on. What do you think, Eric, Noreen, what do you think?
It's actually been done over the years. We've seen that in the files. And what happens is new residents come on board, don't know about it, and the whole process seems to repeat.
So it might be that now is a moment to do it again, given, you know, there's some momentum to to get this IMA squared away with the town and at least change the mechanism by which uh the work is done and try to reduce costs, so.
Right, but just so you know, how we reached um the the sixty-five members that were affected by the second, the first Bear Ridge incident, their names, their addresses, not their names, are all on the bill we all received as the impacted households. And so we were able to put a notice in each of their mailboxes. But I I would much prefer, if you guys are game, to have the town, village send out a notice to all four seventy-seven, say, these incidents have occurred, a group of citizens is gathering together to to uh help work with us and the town to see if some of, we can improve this. And would you like to be in, you know, if you'd like information?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Well, and and we can certainly get that out in various ways as well, and so I think that all makes sense. Look, the, the, there isn't a mechanism, you know, at a house closing for people to understand the several layers of this. You know, some folks have said to me, well, how is it that I didn't know this? So these are questions that most people wouldn't ask, and honestly, you have to do some digging even to to know the answer. So some people are asking in the chat uh whether the non-resident s- surcharge, why there is a non-resident surcharge, and and uh what's intended for, why doesn't that go to the cost of private contractors? So, I mean, the the issue we confront is that w- we're supplying water to folks who don't live here and and are are not paying village taxes. And we incur the risk, for example, when there's a water main break and the water is lost, we we have paid for that water and have no way to bill for it. Uh, and, you know, the cost of that is borne by the village. So over many years, the the rate structure has been created as you see it now. And that's one of the reasons that the district rate is lower if there's a water district, because we have less risk, less exposure and have to have have l- less work to do, which would be the dream solution. I mean, we're, we're constantly, we have people on call twenty-four seven to respond to problems with water. And uh our share of the water plant uh pays for people twenty-four seven literally watching the plant, watching the levels in the tanks, all those kinds of things. And and um, you know, that's money we invest on behalf of the village of Pleasantville. Because of this accident of history, we're serving people who don't live here. And that's how the uh billing construct has been created over decades. So, you know, we can revisit all of that, but um we're, you know, I think from the village's standpoint, I I speak kind of from history here as well. Uh, we, we we want to do the right thing, but we'd like to get out from under this awkward circumstance uh where uh we have us, some of the responsibility, but no capacity to um make the fundamental changes that would make this a cleaner system, so.
All right.
I think Mount Pleasant is open to the discussion now, so.
As we, as we have conversation with the town, it obviously is in our interest to keep you and uh Eric informed.
Right.
You know what what conversations are going on there, even before there are written documents.
Yeah, look, so, you know, we we have a strong relationship with the town, of which we're apart, um, which isn't to say that we agree on every subject. Um, uh, and, you know, in this specific circumstance, we're in the kind of awkward circumstance that uh we feel as though the solution to this problem is mostly on their desk, and even if we wanted to take it on, we're prescribed from doing so to make these capital improvements outside our boundaries, so.
Right, right.
Want to add anything to that, Eric and Noreen?
No, it's a tough position.
Yeah, and it's a tough position for all of you. I mean, the last thing on earth we want to be doing is annoying people, I can assure you of that, so. Uh, some of it, here's, here's hoping that the three breaks are the last we see for a while. Just so we needed in twenty twenty, more water main breaks on top of everything else, right?
Well, and of course, the succession of three in a row absolutely flipped our people, including me.
Yeah, right. Well, I mean, it's, it's interesting, if you, if you look back, in fact, you can see, um, you know, in the history, the the neighborhoods that haven't had a break in a long time are obviously not paying attention to this, no doubt. Some newer residents don't even know it exists, and you know, in some neighborhoods where some people have a problem and some don't, there's been a disinclination to to gather together to address it, because if you don't have an immediate problem, a big capital cost doesn't feel very attractive. If you do have a big problem, y- you want, obviously, the biggest group of people to share in the overall cost, so.
Sure.
Um, there you have it, so.
All right.
Anybody else on this subject? All right.
Uh, hi, just real quick, uh, Crystal Rancy, um, I'm resident of Bear Ridge.
Yes, we talked at length.
Yes, we did, and I appreciate your time.
At least attach your face to the voice.
Oh, good, nice to meet you through Zoom. Um, just real quick, I want to just say that I'm I'm happy and appreciative of what the village is doing with the intermunicipal agreement with the town, you know, to try to, you know, make it a little easier when these repairs are needed. You know, the condition of the pipes are deteriorating. Um, as some of my neighbors had mentioned, you know, we're concerned about the 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 status. So, you know, the IMA is is a great first stop and at least making it more affordable um for when these conditions do do come up. So I just wanted to say thank you for.
And thank you, you, you sit at a perch with a a lot of insight into all of this, so.
I do, have a little water background, so I can appreciate it and.
There's a specialist in your midst, John.
Crystal, it's nice to meet you. I I, your name has surfaced. I think you responded to the mailbox stuffer.
Yes, yes, so we'll, we'll talk later. We don't have to waste anymore.
No, no.
I just wanted to.
Billings business.
Well, thank you, Crystal, and thank you for that conversation we had the other day, which I, it was helpful to me too, so. Anybody else on the subject of non-resident water before we move on?
Well, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you for having us.
A happy, quiet, small, socially distant Thanksgiving. Oh, my God.
Now that we've blown your agenda to smithereens.
No, we, we had you planned.
John.
Yeah. All right, we're going to move on to the, to the next exciting subject, which is funding options for garbage trucks, so. Imagine, no one will leave the call with that compelling.
Uh, holiday activities and winter recreation?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I skipped right over that. Matt is on. Thank you, Matt.
I got your back.
Holiday activities, winter recreation. Take it away.
Sure, so um, obviously, the holiday sing is something that we are anticipating not being able to have in its traditional format. Um, so really, the two, the two big um alternatives that we were looking at was having either a um drive around uh DJ holiday kind of a thing where um people could actually drive around the circle around the tree um and and see us over there and kind of give a wave. The only negative to that is it's dependent, obviously, on how many people want to come out and and do it. Um, also creating a little bit of potential congestion in a traffic pattern, so. That's uh, those are the downsides of that. Um, the other uh idea, which personally I liked, was uh better, was really uh to have families pre-register for a visit from uh Frosty. We would drive by with the park's truck and trailer. Um, and uh if families registered, we could stop in front of their house. Um, and the child or family could take a picture with Frosty, have a quick uh stop by and 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 do it that way. And that was nice, because it doesn't necessarily require a mass um coordination with police or anyone of that nature. Um, and it's really something that we could do over the course of a couple of days if we opened it up, similar to um, the howl, uh holiday window painting, which, you know, the format really got uh rave reviews uh from people because it really kind of um worked with their schedule a little bit. So those are really the two big ideas that we're uh, we're shooting around. I do like the uh, the visits from Frosty a little better. Um, but certainly willing to to hear opinions.
There's, there's another idea that Courtney and Jackie, our communications team, uh surfaced to me. I don't know if they talk with it with uh Peter or Matt or.
Yeah, we heard.
Yeah, we talked about it today, yeah.
Well, go ahead, David, explain it.
Yeah, so they had suggested that we could, and it doesn't ob- it doesn't uh prevent us from doing either one of these other things, but they suggested that we could work with the school district. Um, I see at least one uh blue glass clad school board person here uh to uh to have a Zoom sing-along for uh holiday tunes, perhaps led by the choral directors of the the, you know, middle and high school or elementary, middle and high school.
Yeah, so I, I chatted with them a little bit about that today as well. Uh, I think an idea like that is great. Uh, I'm not sure that the capacity to do it live on Zoom is going to work out too well. You get this lag that differs depending on people's uh connections. Um, one interesting thing is, and I pitched this to my sound engineer son, uh, who I I have conscripted if he is needed to help uh assemble all this, that we might be able to take um audio clips from lots of different people and feed it together. Uh, and then, you know, conceivably also have a moment if if you wanted to have a sing-along in your house, you know, sing along with Follow the Bouncing Ball kind of thing like the old days. But um, one nice idea was that, you know, you could showcase some folks, perhaps, you know, high school singers who are particularly good and maybe stitch together some um uh synced up uh singers who who actually can, you know, provide a a delivery of a song with harmony and all. I don't know if anyone saw the Veterans Day clip we recorded, but I I grabbed a clip from the U S Naval Academy Glee Club, America the Beautiful, with all of these Glee Club members all in at home, because they're not on campus, all singing, obviously, these are trained uh military academy singers, but all stitched together in a very, you know, it's a very produced thing beyond our reach, but uh still a very nice uh thing and one that isn't, I don't think impossible to imagine, so. I'm gung ho about that. Um, back to Matt's comments, uh, I think the visit from Frosty is is almost the only realistic option. I mean, as you'll hear
Yeah.
tonight, first off, we have George Latimer coming on around eight to give us a quick COVID update, but in the numbers I'm going to point out to the community, uh, in the village of Pleasantville, November sixth, five positives. November twelfth, thirteen positives. November seventeen, twenty-one positives. November twenty-three, thirty-two positives. Uh, between November sixth and November twenty-three, uh, we went up six hundred percent. So these are scary numbers. Uh, and and for that reason, I think we, a- anything we can do to avoid the risk of folks hanging out too close to one another, we ought to do it.
Yeah, I I don't love the car around the Christmas tree one either. I mean, I think it's good to generate ideas, and obviously, we're super limited. But I agree with you, Matt, that the Frosty one seems more appealing to me.
So do you think, Matt, based on your seat-of-the-pants guess, that the subscribers for that would overwhelm the Frosty system, or are you?
That's why we would space it out.
Uh, would we, would we need multiple Frostys?
Uh, there's only one Frosty, Mr. Mayor. Let's not imply.
You gotta believe.
There's only one Santa, too, you know? We'll make it work.
All right, anybody else? I mean, it seems like a a really nice idea to me. Anybody else?
Just FYI, I believe it's uh uh George Latimer's birthday today.
Oh.
I can't believe he's checking in on his birthday, but that's my understanding. That's thing number one. Um, if you, if you need any help with the Zoom, more than happy to do that. Uh, you're right, Mr. Mayor, in terms of people singing together live, almost impossible in a Zoom setting. Not possible, but people doing solos, individual songs works well, and then, you know, if you get things ahead of time, you can mix them together and make them work.
Shane, do you have the time where the interest, if we, if we sort of cast the net a little bit wider, making sure that we have some accomplished singers, but then also like getting kids and everything? So I think it could be a really cool video that we could push over our social channels as well.
Yeah, I'd be willing to work on it if people.
Yeah, as I say, my son is willing to do the sound mixing, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll.
Enforce servitude within the family.
I'd be willing to work with Ben.
I know you would. Okay, uh, then, Matt, when would, what what, just for folks to know, the menorah, uh, the not the menorah, the dreidel had um, various maintenance problems. We had made a sort of a temporary dreidel dreidel to replace the one that was lost the year before. So, uh, thank you, Rich Sarfati. He has uh, contributed his services and a new dreidel has been made. So we're going to have a new dreidel and then when, Matt, do you think we would light that up? And would we make that a thing at all? Uh, I mean, it'd be nice to make it a virtual thing and broadcast it. My fear is that we might have a hard time keeping too many people from coming. I mean, a month ago, I wouldn't have felt quite so trepidatious. I mean.
I think similar to the to the lighting of the tree, we kind of do it and let people admire as they see fit as opposed to an event.
Yeah.
The other thing we could do maybe is not tell people when it's happening. Do like a do a thing that's not live and then broadcast it later.
All right.
We could send it out, you know, watch the tree lighting, the holiday lighting and the dreidel lighting.
Look at that. George Latimer has arrived. All right, before we start a regular meeting, it has been suggested, Mr. County Executive, that today is your birthday. Is that true? You're muted. We can't hear you. You're muted.
Yes, I got you. Uh, yesterday, yesterday was my birthday. I reached my 67th year and I'm proud to still be here at that point.
Well, we're proud to have you. Uh, and I I'm sort of glad it was yesterday, not today, so we will not sing happy birthday. Because otherwise, we would have felt compelled to. So.
Well, I'll try to book a return visit right around the day itself next time.
We'll make a note. All right. So uh, we start a regular meeting at eight and I'll intro the meeting and then bring you on and send you on to your next ventures.
Very good. I appreciate it. Just want to give you a brief update, but I'll go on mute right now and I'll wait to hear the queue.
Thank you, George. All right. Anything else, Matt?
Well, uh, the the second item of that conversation is, you know, we started discussing potential winter recreation programming. The fall programs wrapped up last week, uh, by all accounts, very successful. Uh, and we had chatted about uh, potentially doing some preschool, uh, pre-K type programming during the day and even outdoor winter programming. Um, you know, if the weather temperature allows, so kind of wanted to revisit that with the board as well. Um, given the increase in tests uh, in cases and and all of that fallout.
So additionally, Eric, to that, not just preschool programming, but our, we we would anticipate continuing uh, elementary school age programming after school as well. Obviously, it would be confined to, you know, pretty much one program a day um, over at the rec center. Um, and and socially distanced and masked and all of that stuff. Um, we would also look to, I know we had talked about some of the outdoor stuff. Um, we're fine with offering uh, one or two of those active type of programmings in that vein. Uh, one thing I will say, as we've gotten deeper into November, where temperatures have hit the 40s and uh, low 50s, kids have been pretty active about coming inside for a couple minute warm up break and things like that. So we we actually have uh, canceled a day or two due to wind and chill. And you know, obviously, there was a mixture of active and and more passive programming, like arts and crafts and things like that. But um, that certainly was a factor as we got into November.
Well, so, I mean, sounds like you're doing a good job, right?
All things considered.
That's about all you can do. Yeah.
Unfortunately, yes.
So I think that the the takeaway is, do we want to proceed with planning for um, any type of indoor programming right now? Or should we want to hold off? Uh, okay.
I think we have to hold off.
Yeah.
I would, I would agree. I would agree.
I mean, is there any appetite for a polar bears program or something? Not swimming, but you know, like a you know, imagine we're in Reykjavik and kids do this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, we we would offer it. I mean, certainly not necessarily five days a week. I don't know what the appetite is for it. Or or, you know, we could and see what what sticks or not. Um, the difference being is that if we know that these programs are active from the get go, and that's what we put out to the public, um, certainly they're kind of signing up for that kind of thing um, with eyes wide open. Um, but that's really going to be dependent on 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 the public and what they want to do. Um, if if the boards.
Matt, why don't you send out a quick survey and just sort of.
Yeah, we had, we talked about that last time, maybe just a really simple one.
Sure. So are are we, just to be clear, are we saying that we don't want even one program a day inside socially distanced at the rec?
That's right.
I I mean.
You want the schools to stay open, even though, you know, who knows?
We'll see what the county executive has to say. I mean, the numbers are are skyrocketing in Pleasantville. I mean, 600% increase between November 6 and November 23. Obviously, the numbers are small enough that it can, you know, s- 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 some specific outbreak can leverage a big change. It's not like we're, you know, a very big place, but it's been a steady and relentless climb, and it just feels like we have to be extraordinarily careful.
Every single positive test somebody Peter had talked to on Zoom the day before.
Pardon?
We.
Yeah.
No, the the good news is, you know, our our ability to plan programming, should things change, should things shift somehow, uh, is is a very short turnaround period. So um, you tell us in the morning that you want something planned. We can pretty much have it done by the afternoon.
All right. Well, so that's the answer. I'd say we remain in three point position to see how it all plays out, especially as we get, you know, into this winter holiday season, which is feeling like a kind of a litmus test for what the world will look like come the new year.
I just want to say I'm hearing some, what sound like some cute little kids in the background. So I would just suggest that if you're not speaking.
Nicole, I'm going to raise my hand right now and say that because my daughter doesn't have my full attention.
Oh, really? Oh. Well, that's why I, that's why I'm constantly muting and unmuting because I'm just any moment, but avalanche.
Come on, bring her into the screen, Matt.
Oh, don't give her an audience. You're gonna regret it. But.
All right. Anything further on that subject? All right. Thank you, Matt. So we had a a few other items in our work session. We're gonna have to hold them for continuing the work session after a regular meeting. Uh, because we got a bunch of folks uh, who are going to be waiting on us for a regular meeting. Okay. Back to work session.
All right.
Funding options for a garbage truck.
Um, so kind of convoluted, but uh, we have a grant from Assemblymember Abenanti's office. It's a, uh, what they refer to as a SAM grant uh, for $250,000 to acquire a new sanitation truck. Uh, the sanitation truck that we're eyeing to replace, we have uh, scheduled in our capital plan for the fiscal year 2022. The the trucks actually uh, require a a year lead lead time. So the moment you place the order, it takes a year to actually get the truck. Um, so in order to secure uh, the SAM grant, we need to um, uh, provide a kind of a guarantee for payment. Uh, either we can allocate fund balance in the amount of $250,000 uh, um, or pass a a bond resolution to go out to finance. Uh, the the uh, the SAM funding right now, which flows through the state of New York uh, is is on hold. Basically, they're certifying the grants, but they haven't actually allocated any funding because of the COVID restrictions. So what the state is saying is, listen, go, you know, complete the paperwork, get your spot in line. Um, and uh, once we're able to disperse the grants, we will. It's also a reimbursement grant, so we have to expend the money and then seek reimbursement. So we talked to to Mary and the finance team. I mean, there's a variety of ways we can actually fund fund the truck. We can use refuse fund fund balance. We've got about 330,000, so we've allocated 250 of that. We could actually borrow from our general fund fund balance, uh, have the refuse fund borrowed, um, and then pay ourselves back. As you've seen, we've got a pretty significant amount of uh, um, uh, general fund fund balance. Um, or we can finance it. So we've got three viable options. We don't really need to make that decision right now. All we need to do is provide DASME with um, you know, a bond resolution, uh, which is the easiest path to take. Or we actually create a capital fund and allocate the money, the cash, and which we would then sit on for upwards of two years. So what we're we're um, uh, recommending is that we pass a bond resolution that would seek to ban the $250,000. We can submit that resolution to the state, get our spot in line. Uh, and then when we're ready to order the the truck, we can actually, you know, either finance it or pay in cash. If we pay in cash, we we can cancel that bond resolution uh, no problem. So.
Otherwise, never never actually issue the ban.
Right, exactly.
Except for except for you guys, which I know it's a little bit of work, but you know, you you it's what you do. Is there any cost to us to prepare a bond resolution and set it up?
Um, there there's uh, money spent to um, the fiscal advisor. It's pretty nominal. Um, uh, just, you know, the legal perspective of creating a simplified bond resolution.
Is there a similar uh, cost to allocating cash into?
A capital fund?
Capital, while you do it.
No, there there's there's um, there's no, there's no cost associated with that. And we could even look at doing the uh, bond resolution, working off of a a previous one, do it in-house. Um, you know, the the downside with allocating the cash is we can't touch it for two years. You know, uh.
Yeah, I think rather than tie up the cash, it just makes sense to do the bond resolution, then we can, you know, make the financing decision at the time.
Yeah.
Which is fine with me, although tying up the cash at that scale isn't really much of a hardship either, right?
Uh, $250,000, you know.
We're not losing the money and it continues to develop the.
It's specific to the refuse fund, Peter.
Oh, so it would have to go into the refuse fund, couldn't get it out.
That's right.
You you said we could also take it from the general fund.
But it would go into the refuse fund and then and never come back again.
That's right.
Ah.
Oh, I see.
And the reason the refuse fund is separate among reasons from the general fund is that the universe of beneficiaries is different. Because, for example, we don't pick up commercial garbage.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah. Of moving money from the general fund is everyone paid for it, including commercial property owners uh, as opposed to money generated inside the refuse fund, which is generated entirely by the people who benefit, which is really, I mean, the philosophy is sound and that's an argument for the ban, right?
Right.
The ban resolution.
No, I would, I would say just go with a ban and 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 then and later decide whether you want to pay cash or if you want to ban it. So.
Okay.
I agree. I mean, is that kind of what you guys were?
Yeah, yeah, it 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 keeps our options open. So um, all right, we'll have a resolution on the next, the the next board meeting. Thank you.
All right, uh, discussion update on police reform. So do you, Noreen, did we get yet out of Zoom the text transcript of that meeting on the 19th? Takes a few days, right?
We we have it.
Okay, can you send that to me?
Yes.
Uh, and my intention is to uh, pull out of that each of the subject areas that was brought up. And and attached to it each of the speakers. So, for example, we could see if multiple speakers commented on the same general area. Obviously, I'm going to have to make some judgment calls about the areas in general. Um, and then use that to identify the way forward. I mean, I will say, I thought it was a constructive meeting. And, you know, there were some areas I thought we might hear more on and didn't. Uh, but, you know, in part, I think because we can focus a couple of future meetings on a specific subject and sort of give a little background and encourage, for example, the discussion of use of force, uh, which didn't come up much. Uh, but, you know, the whole hey, can't wait campaign and all that stuff is a subjective concern to some folks. So does anyone else have any thoughts about that?
I just wanted to mention, I thought that Lou Dorio's email that we got with, um, I don't know if you guys looked at the link that he sent us.
I did not yet. I did see the.
It seemed like a really helpful template. So it's just a way for a police department to be very transparent about its policies and procedures. Um, and to sort of centralize it on a website with an explanation. So it seemed like something that we might think about further down the line in this process.
So, I mean, another interesting thing is, I thought you can never tell, obviously, in an individual night, uh, how the schedule works out and who you get. But I thought we might end up with more people than we did. We we didn't end up with dramatically more folks than we had the night of the sort of stakeholders meeting to try to cede the ground to encourage wider involvement. But um, I do think we're gonna want to reach out very specifically to high school kids. Uh, Anjali Wallace was there. Jacob, I'm blocking his, I think his name was Jacob, blocking his last name, who had been there in the first meeting, wasn't there this time. But I think a couple of us should should take that one on, for example. And I'm sure there's some other specific community groups that fall into the same category. Uh, we had a couple of folks, both administrator and a security person from the college school. Uh, neither of them uh, could stay on the whole time. But as I commented that night, college school is actually outside the village of Pleasantville, and that is most of it is certainly the operational part of it is. And uh, so town of Mount Pleasant is that is the primary responding agency to something that happened on campus. But by the same token, it's important to us. Did you have any thoughts, Chief? I see you have just turned your, you you've turned your video on and.
I did, I did. I've been, I've been lurking for some time, but I I thought it went very well. I think we'll get more, much more interaction when uh, when we start talking about the topics in general. But just wanted to let everybody know that I was here. And if anybody had any questions or thoughts, that I'm happy to be part of the conversation.
Thanks.
I I thought if I sift sift through the the transcript of the meeting and 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 abstract the subject areas, I'll send it back to everybody. We'll see. Uh, I'm not sure it's going to give us as much of a roadmap as I thought it might, but anybody else have a thought about how to craft this going forward?
I thought something interesting that I noticed, and I even thought personally to myself that there seemed to be a lot of, I I guess a lot of want of the community to be more involved with getting to meet all the officers and to getting to know officers in general by name and being able to see them more. Um, I was reading all the, all the different emails we received about it. And it looks like not necessarily looking at it as if they want more police presence, as as if, you know, we were afraid or we want be protected, but it's more just feeling like we can see, oh, there's officer, you know, here. And and even myself, um, I was looking and I honestly don't know half, at least half of the officers of Pleasantville by name at all. And I think that, you know, I've made it my job now to find out everyone that's on there. And I think it would be a really good introduction really again, so that the community and and that could be something that starts with the school where the officers start to have a relationship with the kids coming up and essentially develop. I mean, I remember the chief gun sergeant, when I was in high school, um, I remember he was on the bike a lot and I would see him out. And, you know, I I knew growing up, I remember him being on his bike. And I remember when he started out and I, you know, but as I, you know, went to college and then, you know, continued my my life, I kind of not lost interest in specifically, but kind of lost connections to the police department where he's really one of the only people I know. I know um, Anthony Tarletti, because I went to school with him and a couple of the other guys that I've been to school with. I know, um, Anthony Tarletti, because I went to school with him and a couple of the other guys that I'd been to school with, but a lot of other officers I don't know. And I feel like if I'm in that position, and I've lived in Pleasantville for the majority of my life and currently I don't really know who was on the force, I imagine a lot of the people in the community feel the same way. So I think it'd be a good way to kind of connect everyone again, so that people can put in a name to a face and it becomes a more familiar part. And also everyone specifically can start to trust the police more. Because I feel like once you start, um, developing a relationship where it's not just there's a police, that they, every person has a name, they have a personality, they have something that's going on. And I think that it can encourage something that's going to move forward a lot better in how we draft all this and essentially finding some kind of medium. Because clearly this issue right now on a national level, it's very, very divided, very difficult. So I think for us being in the small community, if we can try to go at it in this way, you know, and formulate it that way, I think it gives us the best option to have the most successful, um, reform for our village. That just, that was my take on, on, and.
It's all true. And thank you for reminding us of Gutzner on a bike. Will we ever see it again?
You'll know it's my last day when you see me on. No, but, you know, a, a number of people mentioned the idea of a cop on the beat, walking, you know, especially in the business district, that is something that we've done on and off. Um, having someone assigned for a certain time period in the downtown area. We had, we were discussing bringing that back, uh, and then COVID came back into the, to the mix. And so that kind of, we put that on hold, um, just because, you know, the idea has been social distancing and, 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 uh, you know, but that kind of, like you said, the, the bike patrol for me was, um, was, it was enjoyable and it's, it's fun to, and when you work in a town like this, you expect to meet people, you expect to get to know the business people. And, and that's really the best way that, that we do our jobs. So, um, that's, that's, we heard that the other night and that's definitely something that we're looking to, uh, to, to make a priority again.
Well, I mean, the other piece of that, further than what both of you guys said, is, is although we'll come up with some recommendations for this report due to this date by April one, you know, maybe even a more important piece of this is to sort of, uh, retool the means by which those communications happen ongoing, so. Shane, you had a point?
Uh, well, one thing is we have a joint meeting with the student body government, um, right after Thanksgiving, first week in December. If you like, I can bring it up there and see if anybody's interested student-wise.
Well, uh, you're welcome to, needless to say, we have reached out through, uh, Joe Palumbo and he's connected us. I know the chief and Joe talk regularly. He connected up with a bunch of student leaders, so, but certainly mentioned it for sure.
We had, we had three current, at least three current high school, uh, members participating. Uh, in the past, it was, uh, Jordan Rosen, Nia Pierre, Angelie Wallace. I may be forgetting one or two others, um, and then obviously some, some recent high school graduates who were there. So, um, yeah, we, we talked to Joe. We didn't, you know, it, it's, it's difficult because they are probably, for, for a number of interactions, the, the students are probably our, our most, who, who, the community that we interact with the most is our, is our student, uh, committee. Um, so we, we tried to get a good cross-section and, and, but I think we would definitely appreciate more voices and more, uh, more participation from that group.
For sure.
Have you, have you considered also potentially having facilitated events, much like you did for, you know, the Memorial Plaza, where, you know, you, a bunch of people can come and you have different topics and people can kind of delve in and give ideas based on, on all the different aspects that you're trying to cover?
Well, so we're certainly gonna have some meetings focused on, on specific zones of interest. Um, and, and it's clear when you say facilitated, uh, I mean, I think it's clear from the kind of ad hoc conversation we had the other night, which is what we expected, uh, that some of these subjects, you know, especially things like the use of force policies, uh, need some context in order to give some people to respond to. So we'll work on that for sure.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as we identify groups that we should speak to, one of the things that struck me in that meeting uh, was when the, is it Eslicker, uh, brothers?
Yeah.
Uh, when they spoke, I realized that there was almost no people of color on these calls. I looked up the demographics of our village and I think we're a little under seventy-two percent white, um, eighteen percent Latinx, uh, four percent African-American, uh, three percent Asian. Um, so would it make sense to try to have a group that is, talks to those people who do not seem to show up as much on Zoom, uh, to try to find out if there's a significantly different view of any of these issues in those communities?
Well, so, I mean, Milton and Ian have been involved in a bunch of conversations and were, as I mentioned the other night, speakers on the films on purpose thing. Eric and I were both watching that. I know the chief has talked to, um, Milton directly on, on a bunch of occasions and has an open line of communication. Ye- yes to all those things, um.
I know, I'm specifically saying, could, in the process of moving forward, could we do a Zoom and maybe Paul or somebody moderate it and just really see, ask people who are not white in Pleasantville to join that?
But there, there were also people on the call, uh, who, you know, have family members who are not white.
Sure, no, for sure.
Like Loretta, for example, Chiavetta.
Yeah.
But I think your idea of doing some outreach in terms of, you know, who, it doesn't just, it doesn't have to be just about, you know, diversity, although I think that that's an, an important factor. But who is not being included in the conversation? Um, who might have something important to say? Um, but the question is, I guess, logistically, how does one do that?
I mean, it's gonna be interesting to see, as you saw today when Noreen sent out the stuff that we started to get, uh, from the email address, uh, didn't get too much, but a couple of things have come into the police reform@pleasantville-white.gov email. And maybe that's a way also to, to get, but let, let's brainstorm, all of us, and, and talk to various folks about ways to engage. I mean, I've had a couple of conversations in the last few months, uh, with, uh, various different people in the community, in various underrepresented populations. And, um, I mean, as you might expect, uh, they, they, in many cases, have a, a little different perspective on what goes on here in Pleasantville. Um, often very glad to be here, deeply committed to their community, but also more conscious, uh, of the ways in which we could be more inclusive. So that's a bigger question, obviously, the diversity inclusion question overall. But as regards the police department, we're in the fortunate circumstance that for lots of people, they haven't had a, an interaction with the police department other than, you know, just seeing police around. Um, and folks who have had an interaction, uh, have a, a different relationship because they were either helped by the police department in a medical case or, or some other circumstance, or had an interaction with a cop that, uh, they were dissatisfied with. So, um, I'm not quite sure how we engage, I, I, I mean, we clearly need to engage everybody we possibly can. I'm not quite sure how we do it, other than keep trying, keep looking, keep looking for, uh, uh, opportunities to talk to people.
Well, no, but I'm suggesting something specific, which is you advertise, whether it's through Facebook or whatever, to say, hey, we're gonna have a, uh, a group specifically for non-white Pleasantville residents talk and have a, you know, engage in a general conversation, but then also get to the issues of, do they feel any difference in policing? Do they have any specific concerns? Are there things that would help them? You know, in, in some cases, it may not, it may actually be seeking the assistance of police to be sensitive to situations that they may be encountering, you know, with random other people in the community as well.
I'm not sure about that, whether that's a fruitful direction or not. Maybe it is, I'm not sure, so let's.
Maybe we should talk to some people and see how they feel about that. I, I want to go back to Paul's earlier suggestion, because I, I agree very much with his idea that one of the threads that came out, and we got another email today about, um, how they would love to see police on the street, um, on foot. Um, but I think that, you know, maybe, you know, when we talk about like areas to focus on, I think introducing that as an area to focus on, um, might be helpful, you know, if we have meetings where we're, you know, struck facilitated meetings, as you were saying. Um, but the other thing is maybe having a meeting that incorporates that too, where we could have some officers present and, you know, since we can't do it in person right now, um, introduce themselves and, and talk a little bit to the community. What do you, um, Chief, what do you think about that idea?
So sort of a meet and greet with the officers kind of thing?
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm, excuse me, I'm not opposed to it. Uh, we've done, we've done a couple of things like that. We did coffee with a cop a few times. Uh, it was, we didn't get the turnout that we thought we would, uh, especially the first time, which was at the recreation center. The second one was at Starbucks, so I think we got, it, it kind of flowed a little bit better because, you know, it's not supposed to be something where you go out of your way to meet the police. It's sort of, you just run into them and have a, you know, you don't have to sit down and have a, a cup of coffee with them, but just have a, a short conversation. Um, so we, we've done things like that and I'm, I'm, I'm absolutely open to that type of thing. I think it's, um, I think the officers will find it a little, a, a little, we tend to prefer to sort of be there when you need us. Uh, we definitely have a couple of officers who, who would, would recognize the benefits of it. But I think most of these, you know, four of the.
Start with the more gregarious ones.
Yeah, yeah. Who you're gonna do that with.
Well, I'm just, I'm just kind of spitballing ideas and I'm not sure about this either. But, um, but I, I wonder if at some stage in this process, um, that might be something to include.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's probably more difficult in a, in a virtual arena than it would be in person. I think in person, it would be very smooth, I think. It might be a little, you know, it's, it, when your name's under your face and you're there making comments that are probably being recorded, it's just a different feel. You don't have that open up. But, but I have, uh, I have confidence in all the officers to be able to hold their own as far as conversationally and, and, um, and to sort of show the, the, the face that we want them to show, which is who they are and that they're just people doing a job and, and to get to know the community.
Yeah.
The other point, I mean, all that's good stuff and we should obviously do stuff as soon as we think of good stuff to do. But th- this, this process that we are required to pro, go through is to identify reforms, not necessarily to do them, which isn't an argument to say we should just focus on ideas and not actually implement any right now. But I do think, um, uh, the, the business of, of enhancing the community's relationship with the cops is, is partly a business of establishing, uh, some of these systems that will have an ongoing life. And it seems to me like establishing the systems is part of the recommendations that we're trying to create now. Not to say we shouldn't do them now if we can, but, um, there's a lot, a lot of stuff, uh, to be chewed through. I mean, honestly, if we could get to the point where we felt like we had a, a great template for, uh, the reform report, you know, by February, great, that'd be good. So, all right, so, uh, Noreen, thank you. I see you sent me the Zoom transcript. I'll sift through that and by, uh, this time next week, send back to people the sort of beginnings of a database that we'll keep adding to, that, uh, not only captures the ideas, but ascribes a frequency of appearance to them, so that we're clear on what feels like the community's strongest concern. Meanwhile, let's, all of us talk to everybody we can think of to talk to about this and about ways to reach communities that we may not be reaching now.
Yeah, so Peter, just in terms of research methodology, um, I don't think probably should try to infer popularity based on a focus group essentially. But maybe what you could do is pick out all the ideas and we could do a, a village survey.
I, I, I mean, we talked about doing a survey, I'm not opposed to that. Uh, and I didn't mean to suggest there was some scientific validity associated with the frequency of the appearance. But I do think there is useful anecdotal evidence. It's one of the processes that's worked out pretty well for me in my business life, totally unrelated to this. Uh, uh, to start by essentially chronicling, uh, all the things that are said in, in broad buckets and getting a sense for how often they're said and by who, which then can inform the process very possibly of, of a survey.
Hmm, yeah, I agree, of a survey.
Yeah, okay, all right. Uh, further discussion about outreach initiatives. David, you and a bunch of us have talked about various things, why don't you?
Um, yeah, so this builds off of, um, what was our big initial push last year to hire communications agency, uh, which, uh, you know, started out with one person, ended up being two people and, um, is the same group that's helping the school board and restarting the quarterly newsletter and also starting to push out more stuff on, uh, social to try to reach people where they are. Um, and, uh, so there's a, a few things, the, we, the, when I talk to, I've, I've talked to, uh, various people about this and when I talk to the communications people, of course, what they do being good business people was also to produce prices for all of this, um, uh, which I think, um, are, uh, I don't think we know how long or how much involvement any of this will take. And what I'd rather do, rather than either committing to things that may or may not work or trying to negotiate hard, you know, with a s- small company that may either end up doing very well or doing very poorly and neither of us will know before we do that, um, is to test out some of this stuff to see. I mean, I'm gonna let you know, you know, I'm gonna go through specifically what I'm thinking of, but to try to, to go for one or two or three weeks, doing a few things to see what resonates with the community, what gets views, what turns out to be useful for our social feeds and what, you know, helps us engage with people to, uh, you know, avoid surprises on our end and on the community's end. Um, so one of the things that was very popular that we did early in the summer, I think we did actually a whole number of things around the pandemic, which seems special to the pandemic at the time, but actually should be part of our normal, uh, uh, communications process. And one of them was, uh, Peter did a Facebook Live event, um, and then we recorded some videos, all of which did very, very well. Paul, your video in particular did exceptionally well in, uh, in Spanish. Um, and, um, so we talked about the idea of doing regular Facebook Live sessions and rotating the burden among different people, um, so that if people have a particular question about either an area, area of focus for one of the board members, um, uh, process issue for Eric, um, Parks and Rec issue, et cetera, there will be some point along the way, uh, where they can talk to somebody who can answer their question. And, you know, it's, it's half an hour, forty-five minute commitment, probably once a year for any one person involved with the village. Um, but that, you know, it did really well, uh, when Peter ran this. So what I would propose is that we maybe set up one or two of these. One, one point, which I think was very valid, that the, the communications folks mentioned is that, um, Peter is obviously very experienced at handling questions. Some of us are, I've been media trained, but a lot of people who work for the village maybe don't have that same experience. And what they want to do is actually media train some of these folks, so they know the questions they should answer and should not answer, um, don't get into arguments with residents, uh, stuff like that. Um, and I think that that's probably, uh, probably we, we wouldn't start off with those folks anyway, but down the line, that's something that we should consider regardless. So that's the first thing. So what I'm, as, as part of what I sort of want to get your permission to do would be to do, let's say, a couple of Facebook Live sessions before this year is out, to see how that does, to see what kinds of views we're getting, see what kinds of questions people ask. And if we focus them on a particular channel or set of issues, you know, whether they, it actually works out that way. Um, the second thing is, is nothing that I, I can make any progress on at the moment, but I think we should, uh, maybe work with Shane about how to continue Zoom once the pandemic is over. Um, you know, the, the trick is that, uh, we can't have, we can't each be running. You know, the, the trick is that, uh, we can't have, we can't each be running Zoom on our laptops. The audio would be a disaster. It, it, there'd be a lot of conflict. So you sort of like have to figure out, is it a live camera? And you're panning, do you have fixed cameras, but one audio source that maybe is not great? You know, what, what exactly is going to be the solution? You know, is it actively managed or passively managed? Go ahead, Shane.
The point there being, as we discussed a couple of times before and had this discussion at municipal officials meeting the other day, uh, the Zoom options have presented, uh, some, some blessings amid the curses. Uh, especially for example, the capacity to share screens and all that. For example, planning and zoning are both finding after some initial struggles that in, in a lot of respects, their meetings are better because everybody can see the same thing, um, at the same time. So, I mean, as you point out, there are some questions to be asked about how to address it, but it's, it's, it's quite clear that we need to capture some of those benefits going forward, even when we're back live, although it's not feeling like we're going to be back live too soon. So we have a little breather before we have to figure it out.
David, just, and I have to say this to everybody, basically the way it works is we could have a laptop there. I did it, you know, just the other day. You have a laptop, you have the sound coming from the mixer, you know, for everybody like it always does when we go out live. Going into the camera, pictures coming from the camera and you're putting, uh, HDMI and a capture device into the, into the computer. And so the village board becomes a box. Um, and basically the way I would do it is, you know, everybody could look at it, but only one person could have sound. Someone's wearing headphones, like maybe Noreen or, or, you know, Eric, and they can let you know any of the verbal questions, or otherwise people are typing them in. And you're taking them that way.
Yeah, so.
But you could be looking at it, you could be looking at everything and it would just be like you're at home, except you're all in one box and I'm, you know, wide or, 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 you know, close up based on who's talking.
So, very large headphones with, you know, like wires coming out of them.
The only person who would need them would be the, sorry, Joe, yep.
What we're saying though is we're eliminating the need, the need, because right now there is a need for people to come out to the board meeting. Let's forget we're under, we're under, you know, restraints right now. Uh, when we're back in the board and, and we're sitting there, people would come to the village, would come to Village Hall and speak to us. Now, if, if we do it this way, where, where Noreen wears a headphone and lets people speak and, or types in questions or whatever it is, they don't need to even come to the board meeting.
Joe, they don't, they don't, they don't need to now because they can watch it on TV and they can call in.
Which they never do.
I understand, but they could. And we used, and we used to stream it live too, and we would get like one person every other month would watch.
Nobody-
Have the capability. Yeah, sorry.
Nobody calls in right now. I mean, nobody calls in. But now that we've been doing this for all these months, people are getting used to it. They're like, oh, we can, we can do it from the, from my own living room. I can just sit here and go on. It's not a bad idea to show everybody what we do. It's not a bad idea to have people watch what we do. But I think it's a really bad idea to have people being able to chime in from their living room. Or from even worse, they're, they're, they're out on vacation somewhere and they just chime in. If they want to say something, they should come to the village board and speak to us. That's all I'm saying. That's what I think. Right now is what I think.
I, I, I don't a- agree that it's a really bad idea. Uh, although I do agree that there's a whole different dimension to being there face to face. Um, but I think, you know, the reality is we need to give people these options, uh, as the world has changed around us. So how we do it is, is the, is the challenge. So.
But at any, at any rate, at some point I, I can come in and do a test and show you guys how it would work. I think it would be pretty easy actually, but back to, sorry.
Nothing, nothing to decide now. Joe, we can have that dialogue as we move forward, but there's nothing that we have to do right now. Um, so the next thing is regarding PCTV. Um, Shane had made a request. It seems perfectly valid to me to resume monthly interviews. Um, you know, to, to provide some content and it was of interest, I think, to, um, to our communications folks in, in the sense that if these were packaged well, you could then PCTV could break them apart into little bursts that could go out over social media, which if you brand well, could actually help PCTV as well. Um, that, that the communications folks could use on social media. So my thought, Abby, you're there uh, muted. Are you still actively listening? Cause I've got a question for you.
Yeah, I'm here.
So I was wondering if maybe you or, who's your publisher again? I met him. I apologize.
Well, Adam Stone is the publisher.
If, uh, maybe you guys would be willing to sort of be interviewers. Um, and we'll just do this once against like once or twice, you know, to see how it works. To, to pick somebody from the board, the mayor, et cetera. And my, my thought again would be that this kind of thing would rotate to avoid putting too much burden on any one person. Uh, but to sort of interview, and then you could use any part of that you wanted for the examiner. We could capture it. Um, it would be available on PCTV and then Shane could also package it up in short bursts that we could, uh, user or social, especially, you know, if there's something about um, a property that's being developed that comes out or something about the pool or some, any other interest topics, then, you know, it's a way to sort of push out something that's, uh, in, of interest to the community.
Yeah, I see that, you know, it certainly has possibilities and I can check with Adam, you know, and get his take on it, but, um, I don't see why it couldn't be done.
Okay.
I mean, again, the, the trouble we have and, and, and one of the things we have to figure out is how to grapple with it. At the moment, you know, uh, the effort invested in a PCTV, you know, monthly thing is, is great in concept and we're not achieving anything. Uh, you know, there, there are almost no hits. Two, four, eight, you know, twenty, thirty over the many months. Not that you didn't reach thirty people, that's, that's great, but the penetration is very shallow. So the question is how can we enhance that? Uh, or, or are we aiming our resources in the wrong direction? And I'm not sure what the answer to that is, other than what I am sure of is, I mean, you look at, at the hits, Virtual Halloween posted, maybe just for example, it's obviously, uh, uh, not the same content you're talking about. Posted on the fourth of November, five hits life to date. And you look at village board meetings, you know, t- ten hits life to date is a big number. So I'm not saying we shouldn't do those things. We should, and obviously we have an obligation to get our board meetings out. What we're really grappling with here, it seems to me, is the desire, the perfectly understandable desire, which is, is likely true of all of us in, in other settings, uh, to be able to, to get curated content. Fair to say, David?
Yeah, yeah. So, so I think the, the nice thing about this is that we can be very dispassionate um, by testing it. And I think the real thing will be if we could see two things, which is when we repackage this, whether it's Abby repackaging it for the examiner, whether it's us repackaging it on social in shorter, more digestible forms, whether it first, uh, gets, you know, viewership that would make it worth doing. So if it gets the engagement that we want on social. But then second, if it has a secondary benefit of bringing people back to PCTV, that could make that more effective as well. So I think, you know, the, what, all I'm basically asking is can we try this a couple of times? Uh, play around, working with Shane, see if we can get some, some views and some engagement, you know, and then come back and sort of have this conversation.
Yeah. I, 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 I agree with the trial area. I'll, I'll just mention, David, this is the second time I've had this conversation today because we discussed all of the suggestions in the communications meeting as well and-
Which I ironically couldn't join because we would have had a quorum of the board on-
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, they probably, I've been attending them since the spring, so they probably just automatically include me. I'm happy to swap.
From the beginning, pretty much.
I'm happy to swap the next time, but, um, but, uh, you know, I, I, I share a little bit, Peter's skepticism about that format, and I would say particularly because of the situation we're in right now with the pandemic, where people are just really saturated with video, particularly longer video. So, um, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with trying things out, but I'll just mention that the other thing that came up, which is sort of comparable, well, I don't know if it's comparable, but in the same vein is these shorter Facebook videos that we've done that you mentioned earlier. So for instance, um, they were asking Peter if he would do a short Thanksgiving video. Um, and one of the advantages of that is that you don't have to deal with the editing, because the editing seems to me like potentially a heavy lift.
Well, that's a question for Shane, right? You know, is the-
Well, but we have to have somebody from the village board involved with that too, you know, or our communications people potentially, because it's not just a matter of like the video aspect of it. It's a, it's a messaging issue as well.
I've been, I've been the person responsible for that, for, for brands and it's not, it's not a big deal. You're, particularly if you're there and you've seen the content and you say, look, these are the, these are things that are of interest, you know, put me together, uh, fifteen second or a thirty second on that. And then you just look at it and see if they're gonna work or it's not, and you push it out.
So why not, why not make those fifteen or thirty seconds
Right.
As that content, as opposed to trying to find it in a half hour piece?
Yeah.
Again, I think, I think it's a reasonable request by Shane to try this. Um, see if it generates, see, see if it has multiple benefits. I definitely think that we can simultaneously and, you know, I'm going to talk about this in one of the other recommendations, but simultaneously create some things on particular items of interest that we, we create just for short form, um, that we push out. But I think, you know, I mean, on the internet in, in general, long form has actually had a bit of a renaissance. You can look at medium, you can look at long reads, there's, 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 there's an audience for people who actually want depth on subjects. And I agree that we are all experiencing fatigue. I'm not saying like I know which way this is going to go, but as long as Shane's not charging us anything and we're willing to, you know, I'm willing to take some time to try this out and anybody who's too busy doesn't have to be involved at the moment. Just let us, uh, you know, experiment and we'll see if we came back with anything. If we don't have any results, then we won't recommend moving forward. Shane, do you agree with that?
That's fair. I mean, willing to try, we'll see what happens.
The next thing is, uh, so we agreed and we are in fact recording, we agreed to record work sessions. And, you know, I think when I had a, an interaction with a, a village resident on a, on a Facebook group that made me think a lot about, um, how people in the village interact with issues, right? You know, because we, we, one of the things that keeps coming up is you know, the, um, the civic space and there's very, I've, I've read a bit of this and researched a bit of this. There's a very long history of this being discussed. There's, there was a whole master planning process and there were workshops about civic space. There was a lot of public engagement. And yet, for each person, whether they've newly arrived or they're only marginally aware of things going on, when they encounter it for the first time, it feels like they haven't been informed. Um, and so the question is, how do you, and, and I think it presents a danger for us too, because on the one hand, I think the difficult part for us with these work sessions is we're actually doing work here. The, the village board, unlike, you know, some other municipal groups, we don't do most of our work behind closed doors in one-on-one sessions. We actually figure out what we're going to do mostly in work sessions. There are, you know, definitely conversations that precede these, but a lot of the actual discussion is here. Um, and we don't want to turn this into like, uh, North Korean, everybody is happy, everything is great. We never have any, you know, disagreement kind of thing because, uh, because of, uh, the ability for anyone to chime in. But it's also fair that if you're a village resident who's paying taxes and working very hard and you're concerned about what's going to happen with your taxes, you should not have to get into the minute detail of what the board is doing to figure out what's going on with your one specific issue that you care about. And now it's probably a little too hard to do that. And I think I agree with that. So what, what I would like to try again, um, just sort of between now and the end of the year, a couple of times, is to see if we could take, um, these work sessions that we're recording and the, and the, the, the board meetings as well and pull out of them, um, some points of what we're working on. And Abby, this is going to come back to you a little bit too. And to have sort of a short summary, maybe, I don't know, five to seven things that we're working on, some of which may, may not even have come come up in a particular board meeting or work session, like people are definitely curious what's going on with construction on Memorial Plaza. And every couple of weeks, if we just had a line or two saying, hey, this is where we are with that. You know, they're actually a little bit ahead of schedule. Here are some things you may see or hear in the next, you know, month or so, that would probably be helpful. But if, what we don't know, what I don't know, what we don't know is does, is this something that's relatively easy to do? You know, can Noreen be sort of taking notes? As we're going through our work session, just noting a few things that might fit this? And then we put it together relatively easily, or, or does this become like we need a reporter within the village board to actually do this well? And then it's very difficult. But I'd like to do that because if we can create these sort of five to seven bullet points, I could see, Abby, one of the things I would love to try doing at least, if you guys are willing, is to, uh, you know, publish it at least once in the, in the examiner and see if we can get feedback on whether that's of interest to people to have a quick hits of hey, these are things that are going on in the village that we're working on on the board that you should be aware of. Um, and here's how you can tune in, in, you know, or engage to find out more. Um, it's also something we can push out on social and we have a free channel, which is opt-in email newsletters. Um, and we can create an opt-in newsletter for this as well, so that if people are curious and want to follow something like police reform or the pool or the civic space or anything else, they have a, a, an easy way of, you know, being aware when there are developments being made on these things. So that is the second to last one. The last one, um, I don't, uh, propose to trial, but I would like to have permission for Eric to get a little bit more information about this. Uh, it was not my idea. It's come up before. It's actually something I've worked on separately in libraries. Um, but it was Jackie's idea, which was to have an electronic, uh, billboard at Nona Square instead of, you know, the sort of random, uh, things, uh, posted up there on the surface and sort of, sort of manage a farmer's market today, you know, uh, planning commission meeting, so-and-so, here's where the Christmas tree is being unveiled, all that kind of stuff. Uh, the thing Peter has pointed out about this, which is very valid, which is that, you know, these are only good as, as good as the content and presentation. And you sort of have to figure out, um, you know, the content management systems that I'm aware of, I deal with this with libraries have evolved a bit, but it's still, you know, you have to be prepared to feed this thing and to, to have it be relevant to people who are walking by, you know, where you've just created a white elephant that could cause you a lot of agony. The, the money of, of actually doing this is not, um, my understanding is not that great, but it's more, you know, you have a, something you have to feed now. Um, and you have to do a good job of that. So-
Can I jump in for a second, uh, David? Because we discussed this also at the meeting earlier today and one of the things, I mean, we could just revamp a completely new email letter, but one of the things that we could consider too is making various amendments to the existing structure. So one of the things that came up, for instance, is the signup on the website um, is, is not quite as user friendly as it could be. And there are these various categories and the village news and announcements is kind of on a- Um, is is not quite as user friendly as it could be, and there are these various categories, and the village news and announcements is kind of on a par with, say, planning. Commission and and things like that, so one one idea. Might be to restructure that a little bit so that, you know, Noreen was saying, either you could package everything together, or you could really highlight the village email. And the other thing I thought is that if you look at the village emails. You know, there's a lot of very useful information that Eric is putting out that way. But to look at where the kind of weaknesses are in terms of sort of user friendliness, so. One of the things that that struck me is, for instance, when we put out. The agendas for our work session and our um regular sessions. If one could just have like a one paragraph summary. Of what was going to be discussed in in the meetings, for instance, that would be a way to take the existing structure. And just kind of turn up the volume a little bit. Um, and make it just a little bit more digestible, so anyway, I I just want to throw that out there as something to think about, it's. Doesn't necessarily have to be an either or, but I think. We should at least reckon in some way with what is already in place, in part because we already have people who are enrolled, you know, through.
Yeah, for sure. Well, and, you know, I mean. I I probably probably shouldn't get into the whole topic of the the website, but let's just say that, I, you know, I. Work with usability experts and we're not quite there at the top of the class in the commercial world and. You know, in terms of having a uh. An online presence that is easy to engage with and yields the things that we would want. But I don't think that's different from virtually any municipality in the country, so. But yeah, no, there's a, there's a bunch of different ways to to approach it, and I mean, I guess, like, you know, the biggest concern is balancing. People's desire to get just what they want and not have to, you know, wade through a lot, most most emails. Um, are read in like seven seconds or less, so, you know, that that is a concern. Against the effort to create them and the effort to maintain multiple versions and stuff, which which is why. You know, more or less with the Facebook Live, with um, uh, you know, running one or two PCTV sessions. And with creating this sort of work, what we're working on bullets and trying to use it in a couple of different places, I just want permission to. To work with Eric, Noreen, Shane, you know, and whomever else would be directly involved and experiment. To to sort of see what could work, and then we'll come back to the board, you know, and suggest a path forward.
So, I mean, I think all these ideas are good, uh, I think we need to do a little more thinking about the triage of it. I was just looking. Again, you know, this long form versus short form question, the endless struggle. You look at the series that Emily has been doing inside Pleasantville Schools. And and there are six episodes available on the PCTV site. Uh, back in June, Mary Fox. Reentry and reopening of schools, obviously a major, major, major issue, two hundred ninety three. Uh, watches life to date. Uh, posted on September seventeen, back to school Peggy Galati, John Merritt, Joe Palumbo, zero hits. In three months.
Mr. Mayor, those also went, those were sent out on YouTube, though, so we put them on PCTV also, but they.
So I guess, I guess the question there is, and and that's an interesting question. Whether whether the YouTube content, are people watching long form? Do we get any metrics on whether someone actually watches the whole thing or watches? Three minutes of a thirty minute, you know, is that content, it would be great to have metrics that some of which we don't have. I just, we're obviously resource constrained in a thousand ways, I don't want us to. Obviously, we should do everything we possibly can, you haven't said a single thing that isn't a good idea. Uh, but we can't do it all, and whatever we expand to, we need to, you know, make sure we deliver on. Over the long haul.
Right, which is why, I mean, so so just to be clear, the natural inclination from somebody who does not work. Heavily on social media is to believe that the process of creating something short. Is easier than the process of creating something long. Which is not actually true. For. A average people who we might interview. It'll actually be more likely that we'll get good short form content if we have a good interviewer. From something longer, where we excerpt out than if we try to script them for something short. It's actually really difficult to do short things, I did for three years, I did a seven minute. Video series called Brand New that Shane is familiar with.
Yes, I I went through those two for you.
Yeah, and and I was, so I was getting like, you know, the same kind of views, I think I had one that had three thousand views on YouTube, but most of them were like twenty thirty views. But on LinkedIn, they were consistently getting three thousand views. On up, and so it really depends on the medium, and you know, seven minutes for LinkedIn is cute, you know, that's really, really long. So it just really depends, and that's why I'm just saying, look, I'm not going to take. Anybody's time but mine and anybody who's willing to experiment with a little bit of this, but just don't. Don't come to too many conclusions before we try stuff, because my, you know, teaching social media now for. Fourteen years, my experience is that I never know what exactly is going to work.
We're all in that boat, that's for sure, right?
And we might, there might be a happy accident where we happen upon something that we never thought of, and it works.
Yeah, you could be perfectly right about, you know, it turns out what people want is just some explanation around the. The board agenda, you know, and the the meeting minutes, and that's the best thing, we just don't know.
Well, I mean, what 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 I can tell you that I think we do know i- is. I get this all the time, and it has changed a little over many years, but not a lot. Is folks, first off, they 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 want to believe they have a government they don't have to pay that much attention to. And and that's sort of a good thing, which is to say they want to believe that. Reasonable people are doing reasonable things, and they don't have to be in three point position to throw their body in our path. So there's that piece of it, but there's also the piece, and and I've certainly gotten some of this. In various ways, is folks sort of say, look, I don't have time to pay attention. I certainly don't have time, you know, to watch your meetings or to watch a video of your meeting, perfectly understandable. Uh, but by the same token, I don't want to miss something that's important to me, which is kind of what you were saying, David. Uh, and so, you know, our challenge is, how do you deliver? That sort of sticky content that says. If you sort of pay attention, you give it as much as your attention as your your life and your kids or your work or your whatever your travel schedule permit. But but, you know, we're we're likely to throw a. A morsel in your path that will catch your attention on a subject you want, right? And then here's a place to go to get it, right, that's sort of what you're saying, right?
Yeah, and we're gonna, like I said, I've got a couple more ideas of things that we can experiment, but we'll try a few different things for how to do that.
But my my concern about.
Of all this, it may just be one thing that we recommend going forward, you know, that would be ideal.
All right, so everybody now, all of our group has that response that uh Jackie and Courtney provided. Uh, based on these ideas, so let's um. Uh, consider that a little bit.
Yeah, well, the other thing I'd say about the money that they're asking for is that. It's based on them doing a lot of heavy lifting, and. I I'm not sure that that. I think that we find the right solution that the change from what we're paying them now should be marginal, not significant.
Okay, so and and I I'm not challenging any of that, don't even have an opinion on it, other than to say, I'm. Protective of Eric and Noreen and company, whose whose days are just constantly hijacked by something. They had no idea was coming at them at nine AM, and at at ten AM, the world is upside down. You know, not in terrible ways, but just, you know, whatever, as you heard tonight. Uh, you know, folks upset about water billing or or. Uh, a new spike in coronavirus, you know, it's just, we're in a crazy time, so I'm just a little conscious of that. Uh, and. Want to think a notch further, so, look, I think all this is good stuff, I'm not trying to be in the way of progress in any way, other than to say. I've done a bit of this over the years, you obviously have a whole lot more experience in the world of social media than I do, but. I don't want to underestimate what's involved to deliver this in a quality way.
Yep.
So.
Fair enough.
Okay. Where were we? Did we have something else on the work session?
No, unless anybody else has any other things.
Were we at the end of our, I knocked, I logged out of Novus.
Last thing, then it's the executive session, yeah.
Yeah, right, okay, all right, so uh this, let's sign off, thank you all.